Hi, and welcome back. I'd like to now entertain a motion to appoint a temporary election chairperson as submitted by myself. Michael, thank you. Second. Jenny, thank you. Discussion, this is a policy and procedure, so if we have a year where we don't have officers that are reelect- that are sitting and reelected, we will appoint a chairperson. Traditionally, this is done by the president, and I'm happy to facilitate this this evening. But this would take a vote, because that's our policy and procedure. Any discussion or questions? Or comments? Okay. Put it to a vote. Michael, you were a motion. Jenny, second. Would you like to amend the motion to appoint myself as temporary chairperson for the election?
I see. I'd like to move that we appoint Jennifer Stebbin as temporary election chairperson. Thank you. You said Mike.
I know, sorry.
I'd like to move that we appoint Jennifer Stebbin as temporary election chairperson.
Okay. Thank you. Second. All right, from Jenny. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Okay, here we are. And so here's what our procedure will be for this evening. We will go in the order of president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. We have little ballots up here. There is no secret voting. So what will occur is, we will call for nominations. You can nominate someone, or you can nominate yourself. Once we have all of the individuals who would like to participate for that officer role, we'll individually vote. Normally, the secretary would tally these votes, and then they would hand them to me, and I would read them for the vote. If it is a unanimous vote, there's no need to read all of our names. If it's a split vote, I will read the names for the vote. Because we don't have a secretary this evening, in the absence of Secretary Jones. Treasurer Gerby has volunteered to do that, but I want to make sure that that's okay with the rest of the team. Okay. So our first officer position as president, I'd like to please call for nominations for the role of president of the Seline Area Schools Board of Education. I'd like to start this process by nominating Trustee McVeigh. I appreciate your enthusiasm, Lauren. So at this point, we just call for the- It's okay. At this point, we call for nomination. So when we're done hearing if there are any other participants who would like to be president, then I'll pause, and then I'll ask Michael if he accepts the nomination. So are there any other nominations for the officer role of president? Okay, hearing none. Trustee McVeigh, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Okay. Thank you very much. So this first one's gonna be pretty easy. So on the ballot for president, the only eligible participant is Michael McVeigh. So if you could write your name on this, and this is gonna be very easy. Check the box, and hand them to Brad. Yep. So Brad collects the ballots. So Brad will tally. Brad will make sure we have seven, and then he'll bring them to me. Okay. All right, congratulations, President McVeigh, seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Oh, turn on your mic.
Thank you very much.
All right. Wonderful. Moving on to the role of vice president, I'm now willing to accept nominations for the role of the officer position of vice president.
I would like to nominate myself, Susan Eastup.
All right, Susan. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Stebbin.
Okay. Tim? Jennifer? Are there any other nominations for the role of vice president? Hearing none. Tim, I accept the nomination. Thank you. So moving to the ballot, if you can write your name on the bottom, and then make your selections. The two eligible people for this position are Susan and myself. And if you can hand them to Brad. And then Brad, if you can tally. Excellent. So I will be your next vice president, and because there is a split vote, I will read them. I voted for myself. Brad Gerby voted for Stebbin. Tim Austin voted for Stebbin. Jennifer Miller voted for Stebbin. Actually, it's five two. Michael McVeigh voted for Stebbin. Is this correct? Okay. That's okay. So revision, five two. Susan Eastup votes Eastup. Gold votes Eastup. So five two, I will be the next vice president. Moving now to ballot for secretary. Can I please call for nominations for the officer position of secretary?
I'd like to nominate Jenny Miller.
Okay, Jenny. Are there any other nominations for the role of secretary?
I would like to nominate Susan Eastup for secretary.
Susan, thank you. Are there any other nominations for the role of secretary? All right, excellent. Susan?
I would not. I don't want to accept. I support Jenny Miller.
Okay, Susan declines.
Thank you, though. I appreciate it.
Susan declines the nomination. Jenny, do you accept the nomination?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this will be an easy vote. Seeing no other candidates, if you could please vote for secretary, and please pass it to Brad.
I swear I'll get this one, I think.
Those are the- Treasurer is in charge of the numbers.
I know, right?
Outgoing treasurer is in charge of the numbers. Okay, thank you, seven zero. Jenny, Jenny, you are our next secretary. Thank you very much. Michael, if you can hand these to her, she's gonna need them. Our next position is for the office of treasurer. I'd like to please now call for nominations for that office. No, I'm doing it.
I'm just kidding. You can if you want. I'd like to nominate Brad, please.
Okay, Brad, thank you.
Michael, I'm teasing.
Are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer? Brad, do you accept the nomination?
I accept, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So just to make this official, treasurer, if we can please hand these to Brad. And then we'll keep these for the record for Betty's minutes. And because it's the correct policy and procedure. Okay, Brad, welcome back to treasurer. Thank you very much. I'd like to now please call for an adjournment to the organizational meeting of January 10th, 2023, at 6:56 PM.
So moved.
Jenny, thank you.
Support.
Second?
I said support.
Susan, okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned from the organizational meeting.
Well, thank you to the rest of the board. And technically, Robert's rules say you should only gavel out, but I might smack it on the way in as well, so. I'd like to call to order the regular Board of Education meeting, January 10th, 2023, at whatever time that is, seven, six fifty-eight. So, and superintendent's statement, school board recognition.
Yeah, as many of you know, it is January. It's School Board Recognition Month. So I have a statement that I'd like to read regarding our very hardworking board. I think it'd be hard, very difficult, to find a harder working public body and to serve our community. Like our Seline Area Schools Board of Education serves the students, parents, and staff of the Seline Area Schools. I've noticed that their efforts over this past year have really been tremendous. They have successfully helped us return to in-person instruction, helped us operationalize a number of policies to better support our students. They've helped us broaden and implement efforts to diversify our school district, and they've helped us to pass a $180 million bond proposal to assist in the longer-term vision of our district. It's only possible when you have a caring, empathetic, and supportive school board. We have a range of trustees, and their years of experience with the board, from our longest-serving trustee of six years to a returning elected trustee, to a newly-elected trustee. I'm really excited about the direction of the school board as we strive to take our district to even greater heights. And so I want to thank all of you for your daily service to our students, parents, and staff, and the Seline Area Schools is really grateful.
Well, thank you very much. And I see we got fabulous gift bags as well. Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation of the meeting will be limited to one half hour normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. And we have one in the roster, Mr. Koo, parent. Thank you.
Good evening, again. I wanted to show up and show my support and appreciation for Tim Austin this evening and on the public record. That's all I really want to say. Congratulations, Stephen, on the vice presidency, and Mr. McVeigh on the presidency. Look forward to having meaningful discussions with all of you in the future. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Koo. There are no other public comments, so, and there is no response to previous public comment from me. Ordinarily, this is where the president would insert a comment. So I'd like to have us- gotta get the cadence right.
It's okay, I understand.
At this point, we'll be- excuse me a second. I'd like to seek the approval or revision of the agenda. Items can be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and the order can be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding farther. Further, so do we have a recommendation to approve the agenda as revised or printed?
Support, Gerby.
Thank you. And there's no discussion on this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Seeing no opposition, the agenda is set. Give me one second, I just want to- all right. We'll get it. So we have one scheduled report tonight in the South and West Washtenaw Consortium update. Dr. Ryan Rowe, who will join us now.
Thank you, Seline Board of Education and Dr. Lottsch for yet another opportunity to speak to the board regarding kind of a state of CTE at Seline Area Schools, which is one of six districts with the South and West Washtenaw Consortium, Chelsea, Dexter, Manchester, Mylan, Lincoln, and Seline. Schools make up that consortium within Washtenaw County. Ann Arbor Public Schools has career technical education offerings, so is IPSY, and Whitmore Lake. But the six districts of the consortium function as one so that we can leverage our resources to provide all of the students within those six districts the very best CTE offerings that we can. I will say that CTE continues to be, has always been in Seline and continues to be a focus and a priority as an educational option for all students. And I certainly appreciate the support of Dr. Lottsch, the board, and all of the administration, faculty, and staff here at Seline. It's been an interesting few years. When I arrived to take over in January of 2020, 12 weeks later, we had shut down due to COVID, and as you know, delivering cosmetology or building trades virtually is not ideal. However, we persevered, and now we're stronger than ever. And prior to that coming in, there was a couple audits that had been waiting for, that were CTE-related. One of those was a technical review assistance and compliance audit, a track audit. Last time that we had had something like this was 2014-15, so it had been a while. And that audit happens through Michigan Department of Education, the Office of Career Technical Education. They look at three different areas. Data, which is our programs, enrollment, quality assurance areas. Our Perkins Grant, so we receive federal funds to support our career technical education offerings in total $347,000. And then our financial aspects of how we spend our funds, because being a federal grant process, there's some restrictions there. And so we went through that track audit, worked on that a lot throughout the summer, and then had a visit in the fall. No major findings. We are working on a few things. For instance, we are required to have advisory board meetings. So all of our programs have a fall meeting and a spring meeting with business leaders, faculty, and staff. And if we don't have enough business leaders, for example, at a president at the table at one of those meetings, that could be a minor finding. So we're working on those. But overall, passed with flying colors with that track audit. The second audit that we went through, in fact, the very same week, was a civil rights review, compliance review. And actually, two of the consortium districts went through that, Seline and Chelsea School District. Again, no major findings. There are some areas that we will work on. For instance, when Seline High School was built 19 years ago, and we placed AEDs or other devices that may have been placed at a specific location in a hallway, things change, codes change, and if we had a student or an adult with a visual impairment, for instance, it may not be placed where it should be at this point in time. So through our civil rights compliance review audit, we will make those minor corrections. So working on both of those as we proceed. And in January of 2020, when I was hired, I met with some very fantastic people from the Seline Area Chamber of Commerce, who were looking for better ways to connect business industry leaders with our educational system. And although we thought we were doing a great job, we had some better ideas. And we came up with having an open house and a business showcase. Of course, that first year with COVID, weren't able to do that. Last year, we offered this business showcase for the very first year. We were kind of living through that the very first year to see how that would go. And this year, we came back, and it was better than ever. We had our 2022 Open House and Business Showcase on December 1st, and we had 42, 43 businesses, you can see on the left-hand side there, that joined us for the evening to connect our sophomores, who are prospective students looking at career technical education opportunities, are currently enrolled 11th and 12th grade students, their parents, and all of our students in these businesses come together. And we kind of had a trade show feel. So we had a business networking event for about 45 minutes prior to the event taking place. The culinary department put on a very, very nice event for our businesses. So our culinary students were involved. Alex Bremer, who is our entrepreneurship business and accounting teacher, all of his students assisted me through a project management approach to handle all aspects of this event, from food to the vendors, registrations, to finances when they registered for the event. So in addition to the project management approach with those students, the culinary department, Kara Stemmer's marketing students, Mary Viesel's student council students, Adam Rodriguez did all the publications, the T-shirts for the event. Nate Bush did all the videography for the event. We had a lot of student leadership that took place for this, and we had 1,100 people participate. We always send out a quality control kind of survey after the event, and we had 100% success rate with people being satisfied with connecting these business industries with students and their parents. So what are the goals? What comes out of an event like this that we can be proud of? Well, when you have parents that are walking in thinking, you know, I don't know about this automotive program, I don't know about this welding program for my student, and they see the resources that we have to offer, they see the equipment, the faculty, the staff. Washtenaw Community College was there to talk about free college credit. And then they go talk to somebody like Lieber Aerospace that says, not only can you work potentially even as a senior in high school for an internship, but after school, come work for us, we'll help you with tuition on your way to the Washtenaw Community College 2+2 program for welding engineering at Wayne State, for instance. So powerful conversations came out of it, and then a lot of work-based learning experiences. So our students have left some of our programs and went to Glycon and Tecumseh, Lieber Aerospace. They've gone to these different companies that can showcase what they have to offer, open those doors and really show what they have to offer. So pretty proud of that event, and really proud of the student leaders that helped guide that process. So with our students, what are our main goals now? We're one of those main goals, and frankly, a requirement legislatively is have every one of our students who's enrolled in the CTE program exit that program with at least one industry-level certification, credential or license. That's really easy in some of our programs. If you're in our cosmetology program, that's a state licensed program. That can lead to a license, and it should. Welding certifications, building trades, automotive. All of our programs have to offer at least one certification. That's industry-recognized, that puts, kind of gives value to a student exiting our programs. But what else can we offer when a student who goes through our programs at Seline, let's say our building trades program, they're junior and successfully completes that, what's next as a capstone experience their senior year? Well, right now, if you are a senior and you exited successfully that junior year in building trades, we're offering you two different avenues. One is, you can go to Washtenaw Community College as part of your senior schedule, your senior year, and enroll in their HVAC residential program as a dual-enrollment student, free of charge. We'll take that on as the consortium. Or you could have a work-based learning paid internship with a successful business. So I'll give you an example. We have a student, Jules. She is from Mylan, and she is interested in HVAC, successfully completed our building trades program. She is paired with Anya, an HVAC technician at Seline Area Schools. And Jules is a paid intern with us at Seline Area Schools, learning HVAC in our facility. So it helps that employment, training, and education. So if you want to go down that path with a paid internship, or if you want to go to Washtenaw Community College, here's the avenues for a capstone experience. What do students get out of our CTE programs? And one of the most powerful assets is that students find out what they want to do, and maybe more importantly, what they don't want to do, before they go off after school for a post-secondary experience. So there's three other areas that we've established with Washtenaw Community College. One is the HVAC technician. The second is automotive cybersecurity. And I had never heard of this. However, if you go out tonight and you look at your dashboard, there's probably more computer systems within that dashboard than there ever has in the past. So automotive cybersecurity, if you come out of our cybersecurity program or our automotive program as part of your senior year capstone experience, we have dual enrollment classes at Washtenaw that you can take advantage of. Engineering design technology is another certification program that's offered that you can have as part of your senior-level experience. And a robotics technician. So our Fanuc robots that are up at our robotics program in Chelsea, if you successfully complete that program your junior year, you want to go on to what's next. This is one of four certification programs that are offered. And these certification programs can be completed within a year or two. And we're going to give you a leg up on all of those other students that are enrolled in these programs as a capstone experience. Just a few examples of what we'd like to provide. So that evening at the open house, Washtenaw Community College is here talking about this experience, these experiences. We had 42 businesses talking to students and parents about what they could be enrolled in, even as a high school student as part of their senior year, to take advantage of what they've learned in their career technical education program. Just show you a little bit about our enrollment this year. For Seline students, we have well over 800 students enrolled in our CTE programs for students throughout the consortium. But Kurt Ellis, I know, is proud of the fact that when you look at careers in education, you see 44 students enrolled. We're going to need educators. And where are they going to start? They're going to start at Seline High School in our consortium career and education program. And you can see, I receive calls all the time regarding the talent pipeline. And frankly, when we met with the Seline Area Chamber before COVID, we knew that we had a low birth rate, and we knew we had retirements happening with 60, 65, 70-year-olds. When COVID hit, it accentuated an already-existing problem. Now we have 50 to 55-year-olds that are retiring. Educators, bus drivers, IT professionals, across the board. There's not one program that we offer where somebody, a business leader, would say, yeah, we're all set. So we're helping serve that talent pipeline, but to get a student involved with this business very early on, give them the experience, feed that talent pipeline, and hopefully help that student with tuition reimbursement if they want to go on to college. So here's the numbers. They continue to rise. I would just tuck one minute about our expanded programming. So as you know, this is due to enrollment and excitement and momentum with career technical education. We're now offering three sections of computer-integrated manufacturing. We provide a bus to Chelsea for students, Seline students, that want to enroll in cybersecurity, robotics, and health science. That's housed at Chelsea. We offer morning and afternoon computerated design. It was only offered one section before. And we're now offering entrepreneurship, business, and accounting in the morning and afternoons. So what's next? Here's the map of our consortium programs. We are offering, starting this fall, hospitality and tourism management that will be housed at Dexter. Any student from any of our programs can enroll in that. That program will have students really working hand-in-hand with all of our Chamber of Commerce in each of those communities to assist them with all things that relate to hospitality and tourism management. So a strong program there in Dexter that will launch in the fall. And also modern web development that will be offered at Seline High School, starting in the fall, that will offer two other programs, additional programs, for students enrolled in the six districts. Seline students will be meeting with their counselors as soon as tomorrow to talk about the enrollment process. However, applications for the consortium opened on December 2nd, December 8th, the week after we had offered the open house. And we already have 117 applications already. Applications are open until February 17th. This is the second year. Last year, when I visited with you, we had applied for a state grant. This state grant is available to any counties in the state of Michigan that do not currently operate a vocational millage. So we applied for that last year, and we received $535,000 for CTE equipment to be placed in our state-approved CTE programs throughout the county. And the Southwest Washtenaw Consortium, our six districts, was allocated $287,000. Didn't think we'd see that again for another couple decades. However, it came back again this year. So we applied, and this year, we received $576,000 in CTE funds for new equipment to be placed throughout our programs. $309,000 of that will be allocated to the Southwest Washtenaw Consortium programs. You can see some of the things that were added last year. We are investing a lot of money in all of our programs to prepare our students. And I would welcome any of you at any- And I would welcome any of you at any time to come and visit and tour our programs and see the state-of-the-art facilities, equipment, resources that our students have available to them through career technical education. Finally, I always like to end with the Seline compass. I participated with Lincoln Consolidated Schools, Lincoln High School. In particular, was establishing their graduate profile last year. I attended those meetings with Superintendent Jansen at Lincoln. I just think that career technical education authentically meets all aspects of a graduate profile, of a compass, in all of the districts that we serve, regardless of what their compass looks like. We have students that are continuously collaborating and communicating and problem-solving and thinking critically. And so I'm proud of the work that the CTE faculty and staff do each and every day to serve the students enrolled in our programs.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Rowe. I'd like to open up the table, the discussion to any questions you might have from, the board may have for you. Susan?
So I think every time you present, things are just growing, right? And like those community partnerships are super important, and I love that connection with our students and community as well. So I guess, you know, doing all of this, is there any other goals that you've set your side on? Or like, I mean, I think you're doing great, right? But I'm just interested.
Yeah, no, I think one question that we always ask ourselves is, how soon is too soon to have students exploring potential careers? And it's never too early. And so I think when we talk about these capstone experiences for a senior, the opportunities that a Seline student has a junior, senior in our consortium, and frankly, a freshman or sophomore, because Seline has the advantage there of having these introductory programs like Engine Fundamentals, Autotronics Leading to Automotive, Intro Foods and Intro Baking Leading to Culinary. We have a lot of opportunities for our Seline students. How do we start to talk about that in seventh and eighth grade and fifth and sixth grade? And I think that's, we're talking at the superintendent level throughout Washington County about how can this be a K-12 approach, not just a high school approach, because we need to start earlier to have students thinking about this. Students need to really work hard to provide an opportunity so that they don't get behind their freshman and sophomore year, so that they can take advantage of these extra opportunities their junior and senior year.
That would be amazing.
So first and foremost, I had the privilege of being in the careers and education program last year, and it was Mrs. Camerata's last year. First of all, she's just like this incredibly kind person. But careers in education was one of my favorite classes I've ever taken, and it's just one of my favorite experiences I've ever had the privilege of being able to do, because if nothing else, it just allowed me to meet people I never would have met or like have communication with people that I never would have seen. Because on the first day, I met with another Link crew leader from Chelsea, and we played Jenga. And it was just an experience I never would have had outside of that classroom. And I worked with first graders and fifth graders and seventh graders, and it was just such an amazing opportunity to just see other people from my town and from around my area. And that was just an amazing experience from the CTE program. I also have some experience with the culinary department. One of my friends is a culinary three student, I believe. And so I have the privilege of being able to eat in the hive every day, which is very nice. It's just a beautiful space, first and foremost. I suspect you might see that tomorrow morning if you go into the breakfast.
Thank you, Allison. I appreciate that.
And Chef Bill and Chef Darren are such incredibly kind people. Chef Bill is still nice to me, even though I accidentally depotted a poinsettia onto his carpet with my lunch bag. It's just such an amazing program, and all the teachers are such amazing people. And it's just, I think it's a really great thing that we have at the school.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Number one, you know, as a high school educator, one of the things that I think a lot about is how do we provide an opportunity for young people to make money and take care of themselves when they graduate, right? Like, they're looking at the end of their path, and they're going to ghost and fly. And so one of the things I'd be remiss if I didn't do was note the quality of the programs. You talked about Dexter, you know, I have friends in Manchester. Like, we have tremendous educators and tremendous talent that is spread over multiple districts that we were able to realize by partnering together. And so like, for me, that is a tremendous asset of the program. And it also allows students to have different experiences depending on what they want to do and broaden the horizons of the program. And so I want to just take a moment to, you know, note those individuals. I will put in a plug for the culinary arts program as well, and I will also put in a plug precedent for more crab cakes, right? I took about six home, so if the retreat could have some kind of crab cake, you know, or whatever they make. But long story short, that was one of my best memories of the year. My question for you is about this career and education programs. And, you know, I've been reading about this Grow Your Own program, and I've been reading some of those kinds of things. Is that career and education's program multifaceted in the regard that not only do we give kids the opportunity to learn about teaching, let's learn about food source, let's learn about transportation, let's learn about being a parapro? Is it multifaceted for all of those, and do kids have opportunities in all those areas as they go through the program?
Yep. So Natalie Freeburn, who took over from Ms. Camerata this year, really is heavily involved at the state level with the state leadership promoting all of those opportunities. Careers in education truly is careers in education. It's not a teacher preparation program specifically. So when students go out to do their cadet experience, and they're interested in more students with disabilities, cognitive impairments, visual impairments, deaf and hard of hearing, we cater to the students and place them in a situation. If they wanted to be a school psychologist, we would help them with that experience. As I said before, all of our programs lead to state certifications, and at that state level, they're working on certifications that really are promoting, even aligned with our paraprofessionals who now can do the paraprofessional-to-teacher certification programs. We're really putting this in gear, and so having our students have that opportunity, both through connecting and through our careers in education programs, I think is really broadening their horizons, not just to be a teacher, but all facets of educational careers.
Yeah, we both know there are just so many ways, right? It's not just teachers, right? It's all the different things that all work together. So, and then I guess the last thing I would say is, do you want a plug? Or do you want to do any advertising as far as staffing needs and staffing challenges, and anything we need to do in that regard right now?
You know, right now, we're in really good shape. We're lucky enough to really fill from within. So someone like Natalie Freeburn, who had taught careers in education a section when we had a lot of students, even when Ms. Camerata was here. So Natalie Freeburn was able to really come in and fill that void. And really, at this point in time, we're in really good shape. I would say the one position that we've been looking for is an assistant for our building trades program. We do have a phenomenal individual out there right now, but I've got other plans for him in another position. So, yeah, that technician, that assistant for building trades is really the only position we're looking for at this point in time. Thank you.
So I am really proud and fortunate to be a parent of a CTE student this year. So this presentation takes on a whole new facet for me. And I want to congratulate you on the audits and the grants and all of the things that you're doing. You mentioned the Chamber of Commerce Business Showcase, and we had just a brief conversation. So Drew was a part of that, and he was partnered with a business that couldn't attend at the last minute. And you mentioned that students had really powerful conversations with the businesses who attended. And so I got a sad text that he wasn't going to participate in the way that he had been hoping to. And so I just want to say to you, Dr. Rowe, that you, in that moment, saw Drew was going to not be able to participate, and the powerful conversation that he had that night was with you, and the ability to follow you and to see all the different levels of CTE and the businesses and the opportunities. This is a kid that really saw college as an avenue to sports and now sees things very differently. Still wants to do sports, but is really looking deeper into business and marketing. And that conversation at the beginning of the year was really powerful, so thank you for that. The other thing that I'll say is that my Green Bay Packer son, who is growing up in a house of Lions fans, also had an opportunity, I know, right? This week was horrible. They didn't even watch it in the same house. So, anyway, Drew had only been to Ford Field when Seline was there. And through the marketing class, he had an opportunity to go to Ford Field through the marketing program and to see an area of marketing that he didn't know existed before. And then we had an opportunity, he and I got to go to a Lions game together, not the Green Bay Packer game luckily. He and Wes can duke that out. But anyway, he is really just inspired by the people that he met there, and not just what they're doing right now, which is really, you know, cool and flashy, but also like what they're, they shared what their other goals and things are. And so putting students in positions where they can see the future and see what they would like to do has my kid thinking about what his choices for college might be. So thank you for the work that you do, not just to organize and to build all these structures, but the, just the intentional, the intentional way that you pour into each of these kids and how you know them. So, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ryan. I really like seeing the increase in enrollment in CTE stuff. The other thing I had a question about was the I D E W, trade unions. Do you partner with them on getting kids kind of a head start into those programs?
Yeah, so many of the unions were present at our hashtag Get Hired event, which takes place in the spring. That's our reverse job fair. So these forty-two companies will be invited back for hashtag Get Hired, but there are companies that know in the spring is really their time to shine with our graduating seniors. And last year, we did have a student that is successfully working with one of the unions. So they are present at that hashtag Get Hired event.
First, I just wanted to make a comment about the employability of your students, because when Allison did her interview with Julian and Dr. Latch and I, her being a career in education student was a really big thing that swayed me to want her to sit at this table. So thank you for that. I just had a question about something you started with in the beginning on the advisory meetings. Do you need individuals from our community to kind of step up and help you that have expertise in welding or marketing or other roles? Can you talk a little bit about that and how the Seline community can help you?
Yep. So any, and we provided information to the companies that participated with the open house, but any business leader is more than welcome to contact me directly. Talk to me about their purpose and passion, what their business is related to, and I'll place them with one of our programs. So they normally will meet an hour, an hour and a half in the fall, hour and a half in the spring. There are certain state requirements that we have regarding talking about curriculum, the equipment and resources. But it really is to provide that opportunity and guidance regarding what equipment we should have, what resources and curriculum we should be delivering, as well as offering opportunities for guest speakers, field trips, job shadows. And then in turn, the benefit is, we will hopefully be placing students with that company if need be to help with that talent pipeline. So anybody that's interested could simply be in touch with me.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Rowe. I had a couple of questions, but I think I'll cover those later with you. I appreciate it. Please come back again with great news. Thank you. There are two action items. The first, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint the board's recording secretary, Betty Yonkey, Jennifer Miller, Board Secretary, and Superintendent Steve Latch to serve as the board's designees for posting legal notices. Somebody willing?
Motion, Gerby.
Second's Durbin.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? It seems pretty straightforward, Dr. Latch. All right, well, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, pass seven zero. I'd like to also recommend the following motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and delegating the sale of bonds not to exceed sixty million, as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Owsley.
Support.
Thank you.
Miller.
Gerby again. Oh, yeah, that's a big one.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Dr. Owsley is on deck, ready to answer any questions we might have.
I can just say it's, just to get the process going, so we can get Phase One moving, which we've already started. And, yeah, Miranda can answer any specifics.
So I was just wondering, obviously, this is just getting the process started. Interest rates, everybody's notices are going up, so obviously the cost to sell these bonds is going to be more expensive to the taxpayers. Have we already estimated these interest rates to be higher, so it won't extend out kind of our payback? Or how have you done that?
Yeah, so that works with part of the process as we went through the treasury application for the bond sale in the first place, is we still worked with, that will also be working with, and the sale of these bonds is PFM, finance advisors, as well as through law firm, and then also underwriters to actually get the sale of the bonds. But we also worked with PFM at that time to fill out that treasury app. They do a part of that. And so that those kinds of current market rate things were used, as well as some buffers and those kinds of concepts. For treasury has certain requirements on interest rates that we do for our revolving fund. And so all of those things were in taxable value, too. Those are capped on certain things, even though our trends are a little higher than those caps. We have to keep them in line with that. So those are already kind of built into what the market is. It obviously could sway in Series Two or Three a lot more, but these numbers were calculated pretty similar time to what we're doing.
Okay, great. And we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, they could go up more, whatnot. Is there an opportunity for us if we sell them today and let's just say we're going to pay six percent? If they go back down to what rates were back in 2020, can we refinance these?
A lot of them have a date in that we can refinance. They changed the law recently to, before we could refinance at any time, they changed that law, and so they'll have a date that they're callable at, and then we can refinance them. But our district does, with our old debt and this new debt coming on, we do have a revolving fund, though, that is used, like, think of it as a line of credit, so that can be paid back faster, because that kind of evens out our payments over time. So that's what we saw in the last one, too, that part of that revolving fund was paid back faster, just due to the calculations that were done at the time. So, yes, those can be paid off earlier.
I'll tag team on top of that and ask, can we lock those rates for like a certain given amount of time to make sure we insure them?
Well, the rate is locked in as the whole bond, because it's a whole schedule of payments for, you know, twenty years. And that is locked in until the callable time. So in general, the revolving fund that we do through the state of Michigan, that is a moving per, you know, each year. It's kind of set, and that's what they, they just removed that floor on that, was about three percent, and they actually let that go down lower now by the change of legislation. But yes, that will be locked in, that series. As you sell each series, that won't be, but that will be over. No, nope. It is set, and then there'll be a certain date that if we want to refinance at that point in time, we can do so. If it's, you know, the market will allow us to do it. And we've got people that watch that kind of in general for the district. I don't watch the bond market rates. They will watch that and advise us and that kind of thing. You guys might want to look into this and what it means, and then we can go into the more detail of calculating that. Because at those times, you can do refinancing of all of our old debt and the new debt and kind of look at that all at that time. Each of the next two series, you know, each of those then, kind of at that time when you go out there, there's some flexibility that we can move with the market, you know, back and forward, and we'll do so over time as each of these things are playing out, the investment interests of the district.
Great. Are there other questions from the board? No, hearing none. I'd like to call the vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. No nays. Seven zero it is. The motion passes. Administration Board Updates. We'll start with Dr. Latch.
Okay, yeah, I have quite a few tonight, but coming back from break, I just wanted to point out a number of what I consider important things. So as many of you have heard, we did have a water main break over winter break that caused a lot of damage at Seline High School in the main office area, though, which the good news is it didn't translate any issues with student classrooms or anything in that regard. And I really want a big thank you to Teresa, Anna, Miranda, and our entire Buildings and Grounds team who worked really hard to get that space secured and repaired. But really, an extra special thank you to Kurt and Rex, who spent a lot of time over their winter break, really coordinating the efforts along with SETSEG, our insurance company, and Blue Sky Restoration, to really make sure that everything is in motion, so that really students and staff are coming back with a seamless transition relatively. after winter break. And it was great and well done, and we look to have it fully complete by the beginning of next week. Also, wanted to point out that this Thursday, January twelfth, will serve as our kickoff date for meeting with Clark and King Scott as we are putting our bond in motion, and we just obviously approving the resolution tonight that will kickstart our planning processes for really seeing the hard work of getting the bond passed, start phasing it out in our three series, and we're really excited to get working on that. This is the part that we've been eagerly looking forward to because obviously, the goal is to make sure that we are putting forth a state-of-the-art school district for our students, and we feel that these bond dollars will definitely do that. And we're also going to be working hard to be very transparent about what we're doing with the money, advertising, getting the community and our students involved, and so we're excited about how that progresses. This Monday coming up, January sixteenth, is Martin Luther King Junior Day. In school will not be in session. However, I would encourage anyone, especially if you've never done this before, in the community, there is always a symposium at the University of Michigan, and I'll be going this year with Shannon Washington and Kara Davis, and we're looking forward to it. This, it's at ten o'clock on the sixteenth at Hill Auditorium, and this is the thirty-seventh annual memorial keynote lecture, and the participants are Dr. Alitha Maybank, Mr. Edward Buckles, Mr. Jalen Rose, and the moderator is Dr. Earl Lewis. So, we're really looking forward to that, and we encourage others to attend if they're able. Finally, I was in Lansing today along with Principal Stager to watch as our own Heather Deuce, Seline High School para educator, was honored by the Michigan Department of Education, with, by their superintendent, Dr. Michael Rice, as the education support staff professional of the year in the entire state of Michigan. Heather received this award, okay. Yeah, no worries. Heather received this award over a hundred other nominees. She's an outstanding educator who has worked in multiple buildings in the district over the years and has really had a tremendous impact on so many of our students. And it was really neat this morning because they played a video that Ben helped organize, and it was of her students that she didn't know about telling their stories about the wonderful impact that Heather has had, and it was just great to watch. I mean, she was super emotional along with all her family, and it was neat to see the impact that, that that had, the way we really do need to show value to our teachers, support staff, everyone, and they did a really nice job at the Michigan Department of Education this morning. And they presented a plaque, not only to Heather, but to us, and so here's how it reads. It's from the Michigan Department of Education, Heather Deuce, education support staff professional of the year, 2022 Seline Area Schools, and it's sponsored by, and I had to look this one up, A F S C M E, which is the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, and then A F T Michigan, American Federation of Teachers, and the M E A, the Michigan Education Association. So, we're really proud of Heather and appreciate all her efforts.
Thanks. Any updates from the rest of the board?
Just a couple of things. First, I was just going to tag on, I had the privilege of working with Heather, and, and the even greater privilege of having lunch with her every day, so I got to know her in her role with students and to see her with her students. It is no surprise that she, that she won this award. She's a remarkable educator, and I think Dr. Rowe just mentioned the para educator-to-teacher certification program, and, and I've just learned that Heather's completing that now too. So, she is just an asset to, to education as, in her current role, and I know she will be in the future too. So, congratulations again to her. I wanted to just, in our board packet, many of you saw retirees, and I just wanted to recognize those retirees and to congratulate them on many, many years of service, and saw a few familiar names from, from personal experiences of working with them, and then also from teachers that had, that my student, that my own kids had, and so just an exciting time for those teachers and thank them for their dedication and service to our schools. And we hope they'll come, I know many of them are planning retirement for the end of the school year, but there was one that I noted, or maybe two that I noted that were retiring now, so I hope they'll come back for our recognition in, at the end of the year in June so that we can fully recognize their dedication to Seline Area Schools. I also wanted to thank, we kind of, Michael kind of mentioned it, but we always get a really nice gift from, I think, is it from the adminis, from the administration unit, union? Who gives us these gifts that we get for board recognition? Is that you, Betty? So, I just wanted to say thank you. And this year, in addition to some really great Seline swag, we also have a delicious brownie, so thank you for that. It's really appreciated. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank the board for, for appointing me secretary, and I'm looking forward to leadership in this, in this new capacity. I haven't served as, as a, as, I don't know, what do we call this officer? Thank you. What do we call this officer? I haven't served in that role yet, and I'm excited about the opportunity. So, thank you to the board for that.
Others?
I should say, Michael, I also, I told you earlier, but I did register for another CBA class, and I'm working towards getting all of my classes so that you can get your special award.
Our special award. Back when I was putting the pressure on you, Dr. Gold, I didn't, I didn't, I thought the entire board, including trustee Austin, had theirs already, but apparently, you'll get there. Thank you. Oh, Allison.
So, once again, just a happy holidays and a happy new year from everyone here on the board as well as myself. And again, MLK Day is going to be on Monday, Monday, January sixteenth, so just good to have some remembrance that day. There is a blood drive at Seline High School on January twenty-seventh. It is going to be running all day, and this drive especially, it's going to be really important for Seline residents to come and donate if you can, just because during the winter months, typically, we don't get a lot of outsiders, I guess. We don't have a lot of people who want to commute through the snow to go to this high school, but I know that the people from Seline are very tough and can handle the snow and donate blood, so that's not a challenge. I'm just pointing it out. So, that's going to be on the twenty-seventh if you're eligible to give blood. Heritage and Woodland Meadows are having Runderland, which I think is a fun name, on January twenty-first, so there's going to be a five K marathon and a one mile fun run. So, that's just a way to raise some spirit, raise some awareness. The middle school is having a career day on February seventeenth from seven-thirty a.m. to ten-thirty a.m. Again, that's a good way to get younger students more familiarized with career opportunities, things like that, so that's a good opportunity. The Seline debate team took first place in the two thousand twenty-one Michigan Congress of Arstity Championship, as well as sixth, eighth, and ninth place, and second congress novice on December sixteenth, so congratulations to them. And the Heritage Robo Hornets, Robo Sting, and Robo Swarm took home champions awards and awards for their innovation projects for excellent mentorship on December third. So, again, congratulations to those teams.
I don't have to go last, do I? I, I just wanted to pause and, and really thank the board for allowing me to serve as president the last two years and to support our students that I love and our staff that I respect. To say the last two years haven't been in without challenges would be a massive understatement. I've learned a lot. I would, to this day, step up again, and I'm very pleased to have worked closely with Stephen his first two years. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that, and I wanted to say happy twenty twenty-three to everybody. And I look forward to, to serving and supporting Michael and the rest of the board this year.
Thank you. Others?
So, I want to thank all the community for the support and re-electing me to this position, and I, I look forward to working with the parents, the fellow board members here, and the administration to make a positive educational experience for our students and staff.
Tim, I could pretty well say word for word what you said. Thank you to the community for re-electing me as well. Dr. Gold, do you have anything before we?
Trustee Gold, I will echo that. I'd like to thank the community. I'd like to thank the students who have welcomed me so nicely. It's been fun seeing some of the recent Seline graduates back, and I look forward to serving in this capacity, and I hope we have a healthy, safe, and fun rest of the school year.
So, I want to thank everybody, obviously, for putting their faith and trust in me again as treasurer. We have a lot of work to do now, don't we? But I'm, I'm excited to do that work, and I thank the community for the support to, to do that work, especially the support of the bond. And, yeah, thanks, and congratulations, Heather. I was so excited. I got to be there the day she got her initial award, and I have to admit, that was like one of the most special things that I have had the ability to do as a trustee, so congratulations.
I just wanted to add one more thing. On, some of you know I'm the coordinating marshal for the graduations at Eastern Michigan University, so I flit around from room to room, and I tripped over our very own Brian Puffer, who received his master's on December seventeenth. So, congratulations to him, and if you see him in, out and about, please give him a congratulations as well. Oh, I'd like to move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is listed in the approved agenda and will not be read aloud. The motions noted, the motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. So, I'm, entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed.
So moved, Miller.
Thank you.
Support.
Who supported? Oh, Susan, thank you.
Ester.
Thank you. And without discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Seven, zero. Approved. Item scheduled for the next agenda, Dr. Latch?
Yeah, we're going to have a D E I Advisory Committee update report, and then Board of Education Committee assignments.
Well, I had nothing really to say. Public comment, this is the second public comment section. Any member of the board may, any member of the public may address the board briefly here, but apparently, there are nobody, there's nobody in the queue. The next meeting of the Board of Education will be held on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, at six-thirty. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session, what time is it? Closed session now, I think with, at, at seven-fifty p.m. with the intent to re-enter open session at eight o'clock, give or take, for the purpose to consider the purchase or lease of real property under eight D of the Open Meetings Act. This requires a two-thirds roll call vote of elected or appointed members, well, elected members in this case. So, so how do we do this?
So moved.
All, yes, thank you very much.
Support.
Brad Gerby supports. So, I can just go down the row to say aye or nay. So, trustee Gold.
Aye.
Trustee Austin.
Aye.
Treasurer Gerby.
Aye.
President McVase is aye. Vice President, Seven.
Aye.
Secretary Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Ester.
Anticip, anticipation, aye.
It was a lot of hanging by our nails. Thank you very much. So, we'll end, re, we'll, thank you very much. We're into closed session. Excellent.[1409.66] Thanks so much.